Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Crop?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Do we have any? No? None? Adoption of the agenda? Need a motion?
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call, please. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crop?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Public participation, this is a time you may address this body, all we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. So whoever would like to come first to the mic, please do so. Seeing none, oh, okay.
She's close.
My name is Alex Harrington, and I stay at 149 Euclid. You know, I hate to sound like a broken record, but he just bought my street. I'm telling you, I've put another set of shocks on my... I'll go all the way around the block just to come to my house, about two minutes right to the street. I don't know if it's something that can be done, maybe not this year, but something that could be done next year, because it's coming, to fix that street. And I'm also here for Sonny Ford. He's a really good guy, and if he was running for president, I'd vote for him. So he's a pretty good guy.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is just a commercial. Michelle Weiss, 18-200 Charadrive, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority. I just wanted to remind everyone of our New Year's Eve gala that's coming up on the 31st, and to also remind you of the New Year's Eve and Never Never Land for the children, starting from 4:00 until 9:00 p.m. And it will be hosted by Captain Hook and Peter Pan and Tinker Bell. And we have activities, games, prizes, rides, face painting, meet and greet, karaoke. The kids will have their own ball drop at 9:00, because in Never Never Land, midnight is at 9:00, and they will have their own fireworks show. Then we will segue into the adult evening with our New Year's Eve gala, starting at 9:30, with the East Side/West Side Band playing live for us. And at 11:50, we will have our 50/50 drawing. Our mayor will draw the winning ticket. The downtown businesses, I'm going to show the ticket here, and the bars and restaurants have the tickets to sell. They are $2 each, a book of five for 10. Our winner last year won just a little under $4,000, and that's a nice way to start your new year. So I just want to remind everyone to please bring your children and your family and your friends, and come down and enjoy your downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. Number one is, this is the third mention I'm making of that hydrant at 31 Mary Street. Basic metals had chosen to paint the hydrant the way they want to do it. And when I painted a hydrant from an artsy form that couldn't be seen in a winter to a legitimate color, I got prosecuted. So I guess I would like an explanation from the city manager, the city commission through the city manager, why it is... Hello?
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Well, I was waiting for you to finish. I don't want you to miss it. I would like an explanation from the commission through the city manager as to why I was prosecuted, and this company would not be, and you aren't even making them repaint all those... There's been plenty of days that were warm enough. I'd like that explanation before I go further, although I do intend to go further. Selective prosecution's pretty serious. Number two, at the last meeting, I thought I would fall over dead. Not one of you, except Commissioner Crop, who wasn't to blame anyway, since she wasn't part of the commission that lied, cheated, and stole in order to get the millage passed. And those of you who did had the nerve after staying... Andy of 14 Woolworth came up here one night, and after he did, I asked you what you're going to do with that money. Oh, nothing, nothing new, just, you know, maintain the present level of services. You had the unmitigated gall to ask for a raise for any of you? What the hell? That's shameful. You lied. You lied, and then you turn around as if you just don't... And now we want a raise? Excuse me? And everybody but Crop said yes? What's the matter with you? What is wrong with all of you? And you, and you, and you, and you, and you. What's wrong with you? You think you can just do what you want and steal from us, and then say, "Oh, thank you, and while we're at it, I'll take a little bit of that for myself"? What's the matter with you? Finally, so that this kind of stuff doesn't continue on, countering some of the little rumors, and you know, there's always a lot of rumors when things are going on like this. As far as filling Mr. Blash's seat, everybody that follows this knows that that's a seat that's going to control pretty much the grid on the commission. The four-to-three vote, that's the one that's going to swing it. I'm understanding that there's been some influence being exerted towards a certain individual, because that individual, it's felt, is going to be able to be managed easily by the mayor. That's what's being said. All I'm saying is, forget all that hukum. What you need to do is, instead of going negative and saying, "Don't do so-and-so," I'm going to say, "Do so-and-so." There is not anybody you could use more than Ms. Cornier.
Thank you.
You need an accountant.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Danielle Tirpoff, 54 Dorthea. I know a while back ago, I mentioned to you about the sidewalk problem on Elizabeth, which I see is now marked with an X. It looks like something is going to get done, though it probably won't be until springtime, which I understand that, because the weather can be very changeable, although it's... I've heard the weather, it's supposed to be a pretty mild winter, and may even have a green Christmas. Well, back to about the sidewalks, about the sidewalks around me on Dorthea, and my neighbor at 60 Dorthea, that part is, I noticed, is kind of humped too, and there's been some people who tripped and fell. I hope that all the sidewalks that need to be repaired will be, will be done as soon as possible, which I said will most likely be in spring, when there's, I mean, no more chances of snow, or it'll be warmer. And another thing, over on Elizabeth near North Avenue can be kind of dangerous, and I've saw people get in enough accidents. I think there should be a stoplight there, and I may have mentioned this before, but it might have been someone else. Because I feel that would, as well as any of the other residents, we feel that that will, maybe, hopefully, there won't be so many accidents if there was a stoplight in that area, North Avenue and Elizabeth. And last but not least, I hope you all have a Merry Christmas, and a well and prosperous 2016.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised during previous meetings.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had several things this evening. There's been a discussion a couple times now about blighted property at northbound Grashit and Robertson. City administration has an update here to what was provided in the written report, and we do have a meeting set with the property owner to discuss issues associated with that property, and the property owner's plans to address those issues and/or to discuss determined alternatives. Secondly, we had somebody this evening talk about Euclid again, in terms of needing attention, in terms of repairing the road. Currently, the city has no specific plans regarding Euclid and Jones, and I say there's no specific plans on that, because some of the funding sources that are to be determined yet are at that stage. So we will continue to research options on road issues, including those present on Euclid and Jones. We have utilized CDBG funding in the past, for example, to do some work on Euclid in the recent past. Currently, that CDBG program approach is being revised, and the funding is yet to be determined as to for sure what the city's going to receive and how we're going to receive it. So as those things are finalized, we'll react accordingly and make plans to address the roads that we can with the funds that are available there. There's also grant funding that is available possibly, that we always try to seek out as well. The third item that I was going to discuss was facilitation of DTE reporting, and I wanted to clarify from a remark that was made at the last commission meeting, as was and is the case, the city will continue to take calls from residents if they're interested to call the city, and we will pass on the information provided through those phone calls or other interactions to DTE. However, for residents who prefer to act directly, we have added direct links to our website for you to utilize at cityofmountclemens.com, where you can report a power outage and/or report a street light issue to DTE. The links are located under the Helpful Information section of the homepage, and you also can just contact DTE directly yourself by calling them at 1-800-477-4747, or visiting their website, dteenergy.com, and click on Report a Problem in the upper right, select Outage, and then use the form that's there for reporting a power outage, or select Report a Street Light Problem on the left, and use that form. Now, some of the motivation in the past to have the reports come into the city was that the city had a way to provide reporting to DTE that went to a dedicated individual and perhaps had a better chance of having quicker action taken. That's no longer the case. Jeff Wood has informed me that we utilize the same reporting mechanisms that the residents have, either calling the telephone number or utilizing the website. Typically, we're going to utilize the website to make that report, but there is not any kind of priority status assigned to anything that comes in from the city as opposed to from a resident. So as I mentioned in the past, potentially, you're just looking at a slowdown. If it's Saturday and you wait to call on Monday, that's two days additional before DTE's going to get notified of it. So if you can handle it directly, that's an option. If you want to contact the city, that's still an option. So next item that I wanted to discuss was updates on personnel. We had several items that I made a report on in the administrative responses. Number one, we've recently hired a planner in our community development department, and very pleased with how that's working out, so we've filled that position. There was a question about the utilities director and what the plans were for that. We had made a solicitation and not received any responses to it. The current status on that is, we have that position filled with a contractual relationship with F&amp;B Operations and Resource Management, or FVOP. They continue to provide not just one, but multiple professionals with industry-specific knowledge, skills, and abilities to oversee and manage our utilities function, so that's working out very well. That relationship is going to mark a six-month period at the end of this month, and the initial contract is for one year on that position for the company, FVOP. We also had conducted an interview process for an economic development specialist position. That was sort of as part of a joint plan between the DDA and the city to develop an economic development program, and one of those things that we were initially going to look at was potentially hiring somebody for an economic development specialist position. There's a couple of factors in play right now that's caused us to back off of those plans to hire for that position currently. It doesn't mean that we won't in the long run, or even in the shorter run, but currently there's a couple of things that have caused us to pull back on that position right now, and see how a couple of things develop before we move forward after the first of the year, after we get a chance to evaluate priorities in the current operations that we have in the city. The information technology position wasn't specifically asked about, but I'll mention something on that front as well. It's currently handled via a contract with a company known as High Tech, with oversight by the finance director and treasurer in the past. That arrangement causes a few issues for the city, including that finance director/treasurer position being pulled from their primary responsibilities, which are absolutely mission-critical. There's also questions and concerns that get raised during our audit processes about the lack of preventive oversight or preventive controls being in place because of this approach, and that being the person that's making decisions on what to do with money, also handling IT oversight of the financial software and things of that nature. And then the last part about it is, there's a non-IT professional handling oversight of that important function. No matter how talented a finance director/treasurer is, and we have a new one, Linda Kunitz, their schooling, their experience is obviously in the finance field, not in the information technology field. So you're overseeing an important function with somebody who's not schooled in that, not experienced in that. So the reason for that to be in place is because we had a difficult financial situation for ourselves in the past, and we had looked at the cost-benefit analysis of having somebody provide that oversight through a different mechanism, and the decision was made that that wasn't worth the financial trade-off that went with it. So that was a rational decision made. It was a purposeful decision that was made. We have a different situation now, thanks to the charter amendment being passed in the city, and the administration is taking another look at it. We've worked with High Tech to talk with them about what kind of ideas they have for how that function could be handled. We're going to get some more information exchanged between the two of us and move forward with a plan for addressing that IT function in a different manner in the future, in the near future, quite frankly. And then, one more item on the personnel side that was asked about, city administration did bring forward a candidate for the Personnel Human Resources Director position. In both cases, that appointment was not approved, blocked by a 2-2 vote and by a 3-3 vote, two different points in time, by the commission. Options for adding resources to this function include utilizing a temporary staffing arrangement, contacting a temporary staffing company, and asking them to provide somebody, and that's something that we can take a look at. And then also, with action that could or could not happen in the near future here in terms of having an appointment for the vacancy of the city commission, there could be a potential for bringing back either director action or an alternative plan for adding permanent staffing in the human resources function. Most likely, it's going to be a combination, in other words, a short-run temporary staffing move followed by a longer-range permanent staffing change. And then lastly, I just mentioned that petty cab and parks ordinances that were brought up administrative for questions last time around, both of those are back for action potentially tonight by the mayor and commission for a second reading and possible adoption, and those agenda items will speak for themselves. So that's all I had under the administrative responses.
Commissioner Mensah.
Have you left the position for the utilities director posted on the MML?
No, that should have sunsetted.
Okay, because we're paying FVOP $17,000 a month, and when we talked about this, we agreed at council that we would continue to post for the utilities director, because I think it's almost criminal to pay that kind of money. So I would like to see that reposted, and if you need me to bring that back as a specific motion, let me know, and I will for the next meeting. I also am a little unhappy with the economic development specialist position. It was a specific recommendation by council, approved unanimously, to accept money from the DDA and to fill that spot. Nobody has talked to me about a variety of reasons why we haven't filled that, and so I see not filling this as kind of forwarding a unanimous city council decision. So I think we're going to need some more information on that.
That's fine.
The information technology function, we're using a company that's located in Casco that does not lend to timely response in the event of emergency. I think that there are companies located certainly within the city and within Macomb County that I think that, you know, we could put those, you know, that kind of thing out for bid. In addition, I think that it's time that maybe we thought about hiring an in-house, part-time person that would be available regularly to make sure that these computers were updated with the latest software, the latest Java versions, and be immediately available. I'd like to know what we're doing with the firefighter position. Captain Percival is retiring, I think it's January 6th, and there will be, I know, some movement up, but we're going to need a firefighter. And I haven't seen any statistics for November from any departments.
Those will be forthcoming. There was one number that we were looking for still, and that's why it wasn't provided yet.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Were all of these positions in the budget for 2016? I mean, it just seems like I remember specific conversation about the economic development specialist, because it was a joint effort with the DDA.
Right.
But, I mean, all of these people that keep popping up, and we keep saying that we don't have, you know, that, "Oh, now we have this new leaf, oh, you know, we have this new money from the charter amendment," and it just concerns me, because we do have, but we still have limited, and so I just, I have, we haven't, I haven't seen anything that shows, "Oh, we're still, we're still in the black, we're still in the black," you know, and I don't want to be surprised at the end.
All right.
Because there's only a, the well is only so deep. And were all these, sorry, hold on. Why did we change our attitude, I guess, I mean, the, sorry, why did we change our attitude in terms of the economic development position? I know that you were saying, "We think we can do it in a different way." It was so important before. I just, I haven't seen a whole lot of economic development, so...
I'll provide some additional information on that, some of it you're going to see either at the next meeting or the meeting after that. There's been some additional developments that have come up. There's been new talks with the DDA president that has also affected this kind of conversation.
I guess my concern is, I keep hearing the same issue.
So I'll get some more information as to, you know, why the delay at this current time. And again, I wouldn't call it a, you know, a change in plan, as if yet it's a delay to wait for a couple of things to play out, so to speak.
Tomato, tomato.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
You can say that. But to answer your direct question, yes, the positions were, that we've talked about here, have been budgeted other than that IT change, which isn't anything we've determined what we're going to do yet.
Anyone else?
Could we maybe have an update with the utilities, since the company that we have in, what they've done?
Yes.
I know there's been some savings along the way. They've found some upgrades that we have to do, so if you could give us...
Yes.
...an update of what they have been doing, and...
As I mentioned, their six-month anniversary, if you will, is up at the end of this month. We're going to talk about what has, you know, what's, what has been accomplished, what hasn't been accomplished, what's on the to-do list, what's been done.
I think that's important to everybody on the board here, because they have made a lot of, it's not that we're throwing $17,000 down the drain.
Correct.
They have made a lot of improvements and changes, so...
Yeah, that sounds fine for a...
But I think it's an update that's needed.
A January meeting, perhaps.
Okay. All righty. We need a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes from the December 7th meeting, and also the special meeting on December 14th.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
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 Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Okay, General Business, 9A. It's a second reading and adoption of the petty cab public transportation ordinance. I need a motion.
We do have an either-or here, so I suppose if you're going to be the mover, and you have a preference, pick which one you'd like to read.
Roger had his hand up.
Okay, Roger.
I thought my hand was up for a question, but that's okay. We might as well jump two feet right into it. Move to approve the second reading and the adoption of public, I'm sorry, petty cab public transportation ordinance containing paragraph 46.411, section 11, consumption of alcohol prohibited, and approve the ordinance summary for publication.
Second.
So at its meeting of December 7th, 2015, the city commission approved the introduction and first reading of the petty cab public transportation ordinance with discussion as to whether or not the ordinance should prohibit consumption of alcohol. Therefore, the city attorney submitted for second reading and adoption, the ordinance containing paragraph 46.411, section 11, consumption of alcohol prohibited, as was moved by Commissioner Bunton, supported by Commissioner Hill, and the ordinance also deleting said paragraph. In addition, a summary of the ordinance has been prepared for publication. The summary has been prepared as a cost-saving measure. Now, I'd like to add a little bit to the beginning point of this discussion, and just basically talk about an ordinance of this sort where you're going to adopt an ordinance. Number one, this is a discretionary move. You don't have to pass either version of this ordinance if you don't think that we need an ordinance for this kind of activity. The reason that we have this kind of an ordinance before us is because we had somebody express interest in establishing that kind of business in town, and that's often how these kind of things get started. In the first reading case and the second reading case, you have a chance to listen to what's been prepared, you have a chance to discuss it, you have a chance to make suggestions or requests for changes, which you've taken advantage of, and that's what the result is tonight with two different versions of this ordinance, one allowing and one not allowing for the consumption of alcohol on the vehicle. And the last thing that I'll point out is, regardless of the fact that somebody has interest and brought it forward, you don't need to worry about the details of what they're interested in, what they're not interested in. You're setting a general framework for how somebody could make application and be considered for this kind of an arrangement in the city of Mount Clemens. So basically, you're just looking at the ordinance and making sure that it addresses the kind of issues that you could anticipate from our standpoint. Certainly, the presenter or somebody that's interested is going to have some information on that, and that could be something that could be of benefit to you. But bottom line is, the details get worked out when the applications are made, and it's really just the framework of the ordinance that you're voting on today, so...
Comments, questions? Commissioner Crop.
I had asked if there was any information out there on cities that have it with alcohol, of there being a problem, and, you know, is it putting the city in jeopardy, and all of those types of things? And I was just wondering if, I wasn't able to find anything in the negative, other than one petty cab that had been run over by a car or something, but didn't have anything to do with alcohol, and so I just wondered if it was...
No research that administration has done has yielded any major issues in that front. It's a discretionary decision, and, you know, dependent on what you're interested in, what, how that would play into the city of Mount Clemens, and what you prefer.
Okay.
I can't give you anything that shows a multitude of problems either way.
Commissioner Hill.
I thought the purpose of this was to be a pub crawl, where they would be going to different bars and drinking, and so it seems to me that it's not necessary for them to drink on this vehicle if they're going to be drinking anyway.
Anyone else?
Actually, I've got a question. Go back to, actually, 46-401, and it says, "There are no conditions for denial." Exactly frame that for me, I'm not sure I understand that. That's number D on 46-410?
410. What page?
Standards to be met?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the conditions for denial would be, would be any of the, down below in section 12 are the conditions for denial. They're enumerated in that section. They'll be denied if they're in violation of any city ordinance or state law, they're in default to the city, they've been convicted of any law concerning public transportation, they made a false statement in their application, et cetera.
Yeah. Okay, I guess the number D of 46-410 just confused me. I didn't understand why it was in there, but, just a question. The people who are running the petty cab here, they are here, can we address a question to them?
Sure, yes, you may. Could you come up, please? Thank you.
I guess my question is, as perhaps it was before, is how would this impact your business opportunities?
Well, the model for us is to allow the patrons to bring their own alcohol. So, and just like you said, we can do a pub crawl, but not everyone's going to want to do that. They're going to want to pedal. You know what I mean? So we will meet somewhere, they might have dinner, go out somewhere, but the business model is to allow them to bring their own. We wouldn't serve it, it would be their own, you know, beer or wine only.
If they could spend more time on the bike, routine, riding the bike instead of being in pubs?
But that's not out of the question. I mean, we would give those options, different options. So it's not to say that every tour that we took, they're going to bring alcohol, some will, some won't. You know, it's not like mandatory that that's what they're going to do.
And being downtown Mount Clemens, there are so many pubs that are close together. We are requesting, if you really could, approve the alcohol, just because, like you were saying in our last meeting, the pubs are so close together. Nobody's going to be on the pub for one block and get all the bones to another pub, or bar itself, and be on our boat.
Commissioner Mensah.
So my understanding is that this is a non-motorized vehicle. It's simply by pedaling, and as such, the top speed of that is about approximately six miles per hour.
It is.
And as such, you will not be able to go down Main Street, you will not be able to go down Cass, you will not be able to go down Market. So you're actually very limited to where this petty cab can go because of the type of petty cab that you have purchased, whether it involves alcohol or not. It's your, you know, responsibility to, you know, to have a good business plan or business model, but I'm not clear that, you know, alcohol... to have a good business plan or business model, but I'm not clear that, you know, alcohol on the petty, you know, will make a difference because of the restrictions. In talking with some young, you know, much younger people, they told me they absolutely would not take a petty pub or cab, whatever, if it did not have alcohol, because that was kind of the point, is to, you know, get together, pedal around, and, you know, consume alcohol. But because you're so limited in the places that you can take this, I'm concerned about the viability. But again, that's, you know, your responsibility.
This place does have lights. It has turn signals. It's very visible as far as other vehicles seeing it. Yeah, it does only go six miles per hour. It's not like, it's for two. I would hope that it wouldn't be behind a bunch of traffic. We can always move over and let traffic go by.
Well, the ordinance specifies, both of them, that any routes have to be approved by the sheriff's department.
Correct. That's why I think...
No routes have been set, so any of those streets could be viable if the sheriff's department...
I would point out one other thing. There's one other change in both versions of the proposed ordinance, and that is to increase the insurance from 1 million to 2 million. The state, I'm not, the ordinance doesn't apply just to you. It applies to anyone who wants to get involved in this activity. And the state law provides for $2 million in insurance, so that's been changed.
Just a point of order. If this one fails, then we revert to the other one?
No, the other one may fail. You may not pass either one of them. You may not get a motion to approve the other one.
For voting purposes, yes.
You are correct. If this one fails, someone can make a motion to bring up the other one.
The other one. Okay.
Commissioner Campbell.
And the cities that have this, where alcohol is allowed, have there been any accidents or problems?
Not that we know of yet. Nope.
Yeah.
Again, this just started July of 2014, 2015, where Governor Schneider signed this into law through the state of Michigan, who even looked through other states, Nashville, Tennessee being one, and there is none of them.
Okay, do we want to take a vote on this? All right, roll call.
Dempsey.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Crapp.
No.
Menzner.
No.
Bunton. Campbell.
No.
43. 43.
Does someone want to make a motion now for the second read, second one?
Okay. Move to approve the second reading and adoption of Pedicab Public Transportation Ordinance, deleting paragraph 46.411, section 11, consumption of alcohol prohibited, and approve the ordinance summary for publication.
Support.
Any more discussion on this one? Roll call, please.
Hill.
No.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Good luck, ladies. Get your application in. Okay, 9B, second reading and adoption of the Public Parks and Park Property Ordinance. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the second reading and adoption of Public Parks Property Ordinance and approve the ordinance summary for publication.
Support.
At its meeting on December 7th, 2015, the City Commission approved the introduction and first reading of the Public Parks and Park Property Ordinance with minor revisions to section 33.005, section 5D, E, G, and J, and 33.013, section 13. A summary of the amendment to the ordinance has been prepared for publication as allowed in charter section 10.135. The summary's been prepared as a cost-saving measure.
Questions? Commissioner Menzner.
Well, I was glad to see the change in the permitting for, you know, loudspeakers, public address systems, but in looking at this again, I looked at our Code of Ordinances, and I'm looking at section 33.006, section 6, animal control. This says that animals shall be on a chain or retractable leash not exceeding six feet. This is in conflict with our Code of Ordinances, section 35.273, section 3, that states the owner, the owning or keeping of a registered pit bull dog is subject to the following requirements: a leash, no person shall permit a registered pit bull dog to go outside its kennel, pen, or fence unless such animal is securely leashed on a leash no longer than four feet in length. And it goes on to talk, and it also says, "No person shall permit a registered pit bull dog to go outside its kennel or pen unless such animal is securely muzzled by a muzzling device sufficient to prevent such animal from biting a person." So, I'm kind of wondering about the differences here.
Well, that ordinance isn't, no longer in existence because it went to the sunset clause.
This Code of Ordinance?
Correct. There was a sunset clause on that ordinance when it was adopted, and the sunset clause passed, so there's no longer a specific pit bull ordinance.
Well, it was a dangerous animal.
Dangerous. It was a dangerous animal, but that's...
It wasn't just pit bulls.
Right. Any other questions?
We need to update those ordinances then, because that's still published.
Okay, there's a date on it. Anybody else?
Okay, what does park, a community within a park mean? In section 33.005, section 5, general conduct, A, no person shall either by work or act engage in any noisy, boisterous, disorderly, or indecent conduct in any manner disturb the peace or good order of the community park within a park. Just an explanation.
Means the sheriff's department can ticket them for disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, you know, violation, a misdemeanor violation of any of our laws.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense to me. I just didn't get the drift with it.
Any other? Okay, roll call, please.
Crapp. Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes. Okay, 9C, introduction, resolution, and set public hearing date for the vacation of, vacating, really, vacation of a portion of the public alley. Need a motion?
I move to introduce a resolution and set the date of January 4th, 2016, for a public hearing to consider a request to vacate portions of a public alley south of Cass Avenue between South Wilson and Maron's.
Support.
The city has received a request from the property owner of 249 Cass Avenue to vacate two areas' valleys located adjacent to their property. A copy of the request is enclosed, along with a map showing the portion to be vacated in red, and a draft resolution. It would be appropriate at this time to introduce the resolution and set the date of January 4th, 2016, for the requisite public hearing.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Hill.
In talking to the city attorney before the meeting, he stated that when the city vacates an alley, that it does not, it is not titled to any person.
That's, that's correct. The last alley vacation we submitted to the state, their Department of Office Land Survey rejected our resolution because our resolution contained the language, "The area so vacated remains in the fee title holders reflected by the records of the Macomb County Registry dates," and that means the abutting property owners. We had to redo that resolution, re-record it, and send it back to the state. So, any alley vacation that is done by resolution of the municipality, all it does is it vacates public, I'm quoting from their letter, "The action of a governing body to vacate a publicly dedicated area only vacates the public usage rights within the area and does not affect title." So, in the, in the past, they always accepted the language that you were passing title to the adjacent property owners. They no longer do that. And under the statute, the way for the property owners, the adjacent owners to acquire title is to commence a circuit court action, to acquire the title. Now, the city can also do that, but the city has always taken the position that we are not going to spend the money to engage in circuit court actions. So, that's just so that the owners are, who have proposed this are aware that they are not going to acquire title to that, to the 10 feet one side, 10 feet to the other side. This, this resolution does not accomplish that. And if they want to do it, they can start a lawsuit in circuit court.
So, does that mean they cannot build on this or do anything with it?
Yeah, they don't own it.
So, is the order of eschic possibility there?
No, like the statute. There's a statute on vacating alleys, streets, et cetera, and the statute spells out that you have to start, you get a circuit court order that that order can vest title in the adjacent property owners.
Okay.
See, a property owner can actually bring, adjacent property owners could bring an action to vacate an alley without the city's involvement. They can bring a lawsuit to attempt to do that. The city has made a party to the lawsuit and has an notice and can object to it. But this, I just want these people to be aware that this action, the resolution, would be recorded and would be sent to the state, and the state, that's, and it only affects property that's in a platted subdivision, and as this property is.
So, there's no point in us vacating it?
No, you can, you can vacate it because you're vacating the public usage of that, which in this particular case, the public hasn't used it in a, in a, forever, almost. And it's been city commission policy over the last 30 years, probably, long predating me, to vacate alleys. You know, the city did not want to maintain the alleys.
But in the past, we split up the...
In the past, our resolution contained the language vesting title, which the state now says we can't, too.
So, a property owner needs to be prepared to go to court to...
If they want to. They may not, they may not want to. They may be content with the fact that they grow grass on the 10 feet, you know. It's just that they, if they built something on it, they couldn't do it because they don't own it.
But if we vacate it, does it mean...
Means the public can't use it, public usage.
I understand that, but who maintains it?
Well, that would, that would, they would normally maintain it because they would be utilizing it.
But if they didn't, what?
You know, the whole thing is title.
Right. It's my understanding that the owner at 15 South Wilson has been maintaining the property for a number of years.
Probably has, yeah. There's alleys throughout the city that people have been maintaining that haven't been vacated even, you know, but, but nobody uses them.
Okay, well, this is to set a date, so that this all can be brought up again and discussed.
So, we should set the date?
No, it's in your, what you just read.
January 4th.
Thank you.
January 4th, thank you.
January 4th.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Menzner.
No.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
No.
Crapp.
Yes.
Okay. 9D, commission appointment of a city commissioner. Need a motion?
No, we got no motion.
Oh, okay. We don't need a motion. Just carry on.
I could have jumped the gun this time.
Yeah, you could have. You got in trouble.
All right, here we go. At the City Commission meeting of November 16th, 2015, the commission discussed the guidelines for filling the city commission vacancy through the appointment process. The vacancy announcement was published in the Macomb Daily on November 22nd and in the Journal on November 25th. It was also posted on the city's website cable channel and in the lobby at City Hall and on the city clerk's counter on November 17th, 2015. Five applications were received by the filing deadline of Friday, December 4th, 2015, at 4:00 PM, and all applications were emailed to the city commission members at the end of the day on December 4th for their review. The applicants are Kern Bates-Gager, Richard Block, William Ford, Laura Fournier, and Stephen Knox. All applicants were invited to attend the city commission meeting of December 7th, 2015, to give a brief introduction of themselves. Interviews were then conducted at a special city commission meeting on Monday, December 14th, 2015. Pursuant to city charter 10.101, section 65, officers qualifications, all applicants meet the following qualifications for office. Number one being a resident of the city for at least 365 days prior to appointment. Number two being a qualified and registered elector of the city, and number three, no person is in default to the city. The charter further provides that this vacancy be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members of the commission. 10.109, section 73, city commission, filling vacancies, regulations. The city commission will vote today by paper ballot, consistent with the practice for mayor pro tempore. The deadline for the city commission to make an appointment is January 8th, 2016. The appointment is considered made once an applicant receives four or more votes on any one ballot. The deadline for swearing in is within 10 days of the appointment.
Okay, just to add, if a agreement cannot be reached this evening, we could postpone to the next meeting. If an agreement cannot be made at all, it will then go on the ballot in August for a vote. Let me also state that I think each, we interviewed everyone, and each person who came forth, I felt has qualifications. Everyone was well-qualified for this position. And unlike the rumor that's out there, I would hope that no applicant applied only to be a tiebreaker for this board, because that would just not be right to have someone come forth and say, "I'm just going to be a tiebreaker." I mean, that doesn't even make sense how you can decide. You don't even have the information that you're voting on before, and the issues that come, how you can sit there and say, "I'm just going to be a tiebreaker." So, I would hope that that's not the reason that people have applied, and I would hope that this board here isn't going to be voting with that in mind, that I have to get someone on that's going to be a tiebreaker, because that doesn't say a whole lot to the person that's coming on then, because they are all independent thinkers from, at least that's the impression I got when I, when we interviewed them. So, I just want to make that clear here. We go forth. So, first round, please mark your ballots and turn them in to the city clerk, and she will read them. And don't forget to sign your ballots, too, please.
Commissioner Hill voted for Kern Bates-Gager. Commissioner Campbell voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. Commissioner Bunton voted for William Ford. Denise Menzner voted for Laura Fournier. Do not have four votes for any...
Okay.
Commissioner Hill voted for Kern Bates-Gager.
Commissioner Hill voted for Kern, Bates-Gazier. Commissioner Campbell voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. Commissioner Bunton voted for William Ford. Commissioner Menzer voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Menzer voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Button voted for William Ford. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. Another round. If this one comes to a tie, I would assume that we should postpone to the next meeting.
Last time I went through seven ballots.
I know, but...
I wanted to go through the exercise.
Commissioner Hill voted for William Ford. Commissioner Crapp voted for Laura Fournier. Commissioner Button voted for William Ford. Commissioner Menzer voted for Laura Fournier. Mayor Dempsey voted for William Ford. 3-3. Okay. I would say that we postpone to the first meeting in January.
Abandon.
Okay. I need a motion to approve payments, purchases, and invoices.
Motion to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Crapp.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes. Consent agenda. Oh, there is none. Go ahead and just move on it anyway, right? City manager.
A couple of items for this week. Number one, I wanted to talk about a Mount Clemens video. Mount Clemens was recently featured on a Channel 7, WXYZ broadcast of a show entitled Michigan Edge. A video covering the Mount Clemens portion of this show alone was posted to YouTube. This eight-minute, 20-second, 26-second video does a great job covering our history and some of what makes Mount Clemens special, only some of it. It also spotlights a few members of our business community. The video can be found on our city website, cityofmountclemens.com, in the latest newsbox on the homepage. And there is also a direct link that can take you to the video on YouTube, which is www.youtube.com, followed by a bunch of other stuff. If anybody is interested in that, I can provide it to you after this meeting, but it's slash watch, question mark, V equals P, P, uppercase J, uppercase K, uppercase D, MZ, uppercase I, J10. Again, I can provide that for other people after the meeting if they're interested. But you can go to the city website at cityofmountclemens.com and the latest newsbox and click on the link there, which is the same as this address. It is a nice piece out of great city, and we encourage everybody to take a look and share it with others via email, Facebook, or whatever. Secondly, local treasure award nominations. Our local treasure awards, award provides recognition to individuals that make our city a better place to live through their contributions to life in Mount Clemens. Awards are presented annually at a February commission meeting. The deadline for nominations has been extended this year to January 4th, 2016. Nominees must be either a Mount Clemens resident or business owner. Any Mount Clemens resident can submit a nominee or nominees. All nominations must be made in writing using the nomination form. Residents interested in making a nomination can contact the city manager's office at (586) 469-6818, extension 7. More information, including the nomination form and guidelines, is available on the city website in the announcement box on the homepage, again, at www.cityofmountclemens.com. We encourage residents to make nominations for this important recognition and award. Number three, current county parking structure parcel. As you know, the county had collaborated with the city on a potential park project for the cleared parcel that would remain after the planned demolition of the current county parking structure located at the corner of Market and North Main, next to the circuit court building. That project was basically shelved later by the county as they prioritized their attention and investment in the existing Mount Clemens campus buildings. We are currently participating in a multi-agency, public-private visioning process for the site. This committee has developed a survey to obtain feedback from interested parties on the possible use of the cleared site in the future. The survey could provide the county with excellent information about what people want to see done with this cleared parcel and potentially breathe new life into the park concept. Regardless of that, the survey data will yield many useful insights into what people come to Mount Clemens for, what they would like to see in Mount Clemens, et cetera. This information promises to be very useful to the city as we move forward into the future and make plans. For these reasons, we are supporting this effort by including a hard copy survey in the Clementines newsletter that will be delivered to all Mount Clemens households. We encourage everyone to return a completed survey to assist with planning for this exciting opportunity in Mount Clemens, and the survey has an address in the lower right-hand corner for you to return this completed survey to. The survey is also, again, available on our city website, cityofmountclemens.com, as well. Last item, fire consolidation study update. I don't really have a lot of information on this, I just thought people might be wondering, because it's been a while since we last talked about this. As a brief refresher, the city is part of a four-community fire consolidation study. The other three communities are Sterling Heights, Clinton Township, and Harrison Township. This $200,000 study was funded by a grant as well as contributions from the four communities involved, as well as the four fire unions involved in those communities. Community, excuse me, committee representatives are working with the chosen consultant team to improve and finalize their draft report, and we hope to have the latest version of the report within the next week or so, hopefully by the beginning of the next year. So, that's just a general update. I didn't have much to pass on, I just wondered, I just was thinking people might be wondering since it's been a while since we last talked about it. And that's all that I have this evening, Your Honor.
Questions? Comments? Commissioner Menzer?
I sent you an email about the link on our webpage for the local treasure. The guidelines come up, but the form does not.
Yeah, we got that fixed today.
Okay.
The intent on that, I apologize for that snafu, but the intent was to have the guidelines and the form all in one document, and somehow when it was uploaded, it was the version that did not include the form itself. So, we had that corrected today. Thanks for pointing it out.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell?
I just have one thing. The resident that came here regarding Euclid, that is, if it's not the worst street, it is one of the worst streets in this town, and the residents of that street deserve better. So, we really need to work on that next year, because that street is horrible. Other than that, happy holidays.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I guess I'll just say, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Hope everybody is safe and enjoys themselves. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Crapp?
I'd like to thank all the residents who attended the Commissioner Coffee Talk with me last week. It was our first one, so it was exciting, and we had insightful and helpful conversation, and I really appreciated all of their input and the time that it took to come out. I'm going to have another Commissioner Coffee Talk on Tuesday, January 12th, at 9:30 AM, at John's Family Grill again. And then, also, in order to accommodate other schedules, I also plan one for Saturday, January 16th, at 9:30 AM. So, if you aren't able to come during the week, hopefully that will help, and I'll get some more feedback from a different group of residents. I'd also like to thank everyone who submitted an application and interviewed last Monday in front of the commission. To, like, the mayor, thought that everyone did well, and it took a lot of thought and reflection to choose to vote for Laura Fournier. I do believe she has the experience we need in the business world, in both finance and economic development, that could be a huge asset to our city. Not only does Laura's resume look outstanding, but she has more than demonstrated her loyalty and dedication to our city. She has served on the planning commission and has been an active member of our neighborhoods. She's given, she has given of her personal resources not to receive any personal gain but to better our city. I believe if we all compared resumes of both personal and business achievements of those who currently sit on this commission, she would outshine every one of us. I would like to wish everyone a happy holidays, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Menzer?
To update, I pulled up the munich codes from our website, and under the dog ordinance that I read earlier, it, there is no, nothing stating that there's a sunset clause. In fact, it says ordinance effective August 13th, 2009. So, my suggestion would stand that we either put together a committee to start looking at these in addition to changes to the charter, because maybe we wouldn't be in this 3-3 vote thing to fill this seat. We talked about it briefly a while ago, updating the charter, and I think that in this coming year, it's going to be more important, and we should look at that. It was not an easy choice. I think we have some very qualified, very dedicated candidates for the city commission seat. And I would say to those who aren't going to be chosen or haven't been chosen or whatever, please continue to be involved in the city. The more people that care, the better the city will be, and so I thank you for your interest. Beginning January 4th, city veterans can take advantage of a shuttle service to the Detroit Veterans Administration Medical Center. There are three local pickup stations. You must have a confirmed appointment, and you need to call the County Veteran Services Department no later than two days in advance. But, you know, it's not easy to get down there and get back, so if you are a veteran, please take advantage of that. I want to say congratulations to Deanna Pankatay. She's a science teacher at Mount Clemens Middle School. She has been nominated for the 2015, 2016 National Life Changer of the Year Award. This program recognizes the very best K through 12 educators across the United States who are making a difference in the lives of students by exemplifying excellence, positive influence, and leadership. So, congratulations to her. And then I'd like to say Merry Christmas to our employees. The men and women who answer the phones, who plow the streets, who pay the bills, who make sure the water is clean, who run towards the flames, and who comfort us at accidents. Thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and your loyalty. Our city is a better place to live in, to work in, to play in because of you. Thank you. And I'd like to say Merry Christmas to the residents. I hope 2016 brings good things to us all.
Thank you. Commissioner Button?
First, I'd like to address a comment that was made earlier that we voted for. We, we recommended a, we did vote for it, but we did not recommend a raise. That raise was offered to us through the board, and the board, I'm just not into micromanaging. If a board says that they think that the city commission, after, what, 13, 15 years, whatever it's been, that they need a raise, that would be, I'm sorry, how much was it again?
300 for commissioners?
$300. Ah, yeah. That $300 is going to break the bank or have a problem. I don't see that to be a problem. I don't want to micromanage what that board had to offer and say, and so, yes, I did vote for it because they recommended it, and that's the way I would always see it. I'm not going to micromanage anybody else's authorities. With that said, tonight we attempted to select a replacement for the commission seat vacated by Gary Blash, and we were not able to come to a decision. I thank each and every one who has submitted an application, and we encourage you to continue to support the commission and the city. But this speaks to the fact that there are several candidates qualified to step into the position. I don't think we could go wrong with any of the citizens that expressed an interest in the position. However, this, however this thing turns out, I encourage those that expressed an interest in the position to run in the next election. There could be as many as two seats open, so throw your hat in the ring. I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a very happy and prosperous New Year. Remember, you don't have to wait until January 1st to make a resolution to make a positive change in your life. You don't have to wait until Christmas to be kind and generous to people you know and love. May the season's blessings be upon each of you throughout the holiday period. Have a safe and joyous holiday. And for Commissioner Wisdom, you can lead a foolish person to wisdom, but you cannot make him think. With that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Couple announcements. On this commission, we need a representative from, for Simco. Commissioner Rager was our representative, and so we need a representative. If you're interested, let me know. If you need more details, I know the majority of the meetings are down Detroit and they're headquarters, and that's why Commissioner Rager, because he worked down there, so it was easy for him to go. If we, if no one on this board... It's during the day, most of them. I think you can appoint somebody from your team.
Right, we should, we should pick a delegate and an alternate. The delegate must be an elected official, and the alternate can be a member of commission, of city staff.
Commissioner Menzer?
I'm currently the alternate, and I'd like to stay the alternate.
Right.
I can, and I'm interested, so...
You want to be the delegate? Okay. All those in favor? Aye, aye. No. No, thank you for stepping forth, because that's...
No problem.
All right, so you have that.
Yep.
We have somebody, and we can submit that name then. Second announcement, Johnny's Restaurant that you were at, he is having a Christmas Eve Day free breakfast from, I want to say, 8 to 2?
2.
2. And he will take donations, and all the donations go to the homeless. I don't know which charity he has picked, but...
Two churches.
Two churches, apparently, he has picked. So, I encourage you to pop in if you can, support him. He is paying for all the food, so 100% of what you donate is going to the two churches. So, if you get a chance, at least stop in, please, and that's the 24th. Okay, right, let me try to get that right. And Mr. Emerson, what is the date again of your...
February 9th.
February 9th, Mr.?
7:30 PM.
February 9th, 7:30 PM. This is one of the first ones you've doing in the evening, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Emerson is doing Afro-Americans' deaths and the burials in Macomb County, Michigan. So, if you get an opportunity, please...
At the library.
At the library, at the Mount Clemens Library. Please listen, go and hear Mr. Emerson speak. It sounds very interesting, the topic. And with that, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and have a happy, safe New Year. And I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Hill.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menzer?